On Winchester Planning Board Meeting. We have with us this evening, all five of our planning board members. So why don't we start a roll call vote? Cheryl Wolf. You gotta say, you gotta.
I'm here.
Kurt Spring.
Here.
Sally Dale.
Here.
Eeching Scott.
Here.
And Deobgerius is here as well. I should note that everyone is being recorded. And if you do not wish to be recorded, please turn your video and your audio off. We're also being recorded by Wind Cam as well as by Zoom. We have with us this evening. Nancy Polkari, our Recording Secretary, Brian Enture, Assistant Town Engineer, Brian Sekely, Town Planner, and a number of guests. So why don't we start off? What you can mission for a 60 unit structure in Center Business District? We are going to be interviewing consultants for that. We have a ZBA permit. We'll about releasing some escortment. We will talk about choosing consultants for our Hilton Street Study. And we will follow up with a short deluxe master plan implementation committee. So I begin with Brian. Do you have any updates for us?
First, your audio is going in and out, just as a note.
I have internet connection problems.
I'm sorry to hear that. So some quick updates. The North Main Street. So Josh Fiala from MAPC is finalizing that that document from this kind of last little bit. I didn't say that there was an absolute rush, but the idea is that we would be getting it certainly before Thanksgiving. My hope is next week. Waterfield, in terms of any updates, I know a lot of people have been asking me about what's when are we going to be engaging with Civicco? And I think that there is so there's there's talks of a special town meeting. I believe the select board is going to be talking about that very soon in terms of when they're thinking about a potential special election. I'm sorry, not a Latin election, a special town meeting to discuss Waterfield and potentially Washington and Swanton as well. The only other update I have right now is that we gonna be need to start thinking about our budget for just this is just to put a bug in your ear is that at our some point this month we need to go through our budget because our budget is due December 1st. We just got the the budget cheats this about five days ago. So anyway, that's just an idea that to put in your head about to think about the budgets and that's that's all I have for updates at this time. Back to you, Deob.
Okay. I don't have any updates of my own. Why don't we go to the board? Does the board have anything they want to talk about, perhaps from some of the committees that they are liaisons to? Sally?
I can just give a very brief update update on the tree study working group, which is in very early stages of formation and includes representatives from the planning board and the Conservation Commission and will include others. And their their the purpose of the group at this point is to agree on exactly what they hope to accomplish in the next 12 months, but it will possibly include recommendations on a tree bylaw and other townwide practices that would benefit the the what referred to as the urban forest, what I'd like to think of as the suburban forest of Winchester. That's my update.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else from anyone else? Okay. Why don't we then move to meeting minutes? We have a number of minutes to approve. So why don't we begin with the September 13th minutes? Are there any corrections of any significant to these minutes? If not, then I would welcome a motion. Sally?
It's not really a question. I mean, a correction is a question at the top of the meeting where it says planning, I mean, the memo where it says planning board members and select board members present. Does it need to say that it was a joint meeting?
May I interrupt?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Nancy.
One thing I observed in looking at all the minutes that are attached in tonight's agenda is that they're all missing the heading. So that is identified in the copy that I sent. I'm not sure what happened in the translation in putting it together. So you'll notice all the headings. That first line is missing on all the minutes. So yes, is there?
That's all I had. I didn't have any corrections.
Okay, well, then why don't we? I need someone would have a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, September 13th, 2021, with the addition of a title.
I saw.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And we just can only ask those who were there to vote. So roll call vote, please. Cheryl Wolf.
I.
Sally Dale.
I.
Eeching Scott.
I.
And Deobgerius, I. So those are done. Thank you very much. Moving on to the minutes of September 14th, 2021.
I just had a question on page three.
Sure.
This is in the middle of the conversation about Rocky Ledge, and it's the list of bullets on page three where Mr. Beliveau. Maybe I just have to just think about what he said, but there it's the fourth bullet reads, there are two different uses between a park and a neighborhood. Preferred.
Oh, yeah, I don't think you're on the right one.
Yeah, Sally, you're not on September 14th.
No, you're right. I am so sorry. Where's my September 14th minutes? Okay, never mind. Carry on. I'll find it. I'm really sorry.
Well, are there any are there any corrections to the September 14th minutes?
Oh, I did have a question about the very first paragraph. Where it talks about swearing in. Who does the swearing in?
Town clerk.
Town clerk.
Okay, because it doesn't read that right now.
It says sworn in by the select board. Okay, so with that modification then, so we can amend that line that's sworn in by the town clerk. Okay.
That's the only thing I had. I'm sorry for being on the wrong minute.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, roll call vote. Sally Dale.
I.
Cheryl Wolf.
I.
Eeching Scott.
I.
And Deobgerius, I, and Kurt, you weren't there until the next one. So that's great. Sally, could you send your correction to Nancy, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you much. Okay, we're moving on to Tuesday, September the 28th. And this is the one. Nope, this isn't the one you were talking about either.
No, I was jumping ahead too many times.
Okay, so are any corrections for the minutes on September the 28th?
I have one on the four updates. And where it says, I said, the select board approved the design development on the carriage house. There are no funds to do the project. I would strike everything after but and say, but the funding for construction is to be determined.
Oh, just finish, just change the last phrase of that statement.
Yeah.
Okay. Is everyone agreed with that change?
Yes.
Okay, and can I have a motion to approve the minutes of September? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, it's okay, Deob. I just, I think the date at the top of the sheet should say the 26th. When I look at my calendar. I think Tuesday was the 26th.
Let me go back to September, and I have September the 28th as a Tuesday. And September 26th as a Sunday.
You're right. Sorry for wasting.
Okay. No, make sure we're in the right year.
I had a question about at the bottom of page one where Brian indicated that the town had received the five letters, and I wondered if you could list who the five letters were.
Is that something you'd like in the in the minutes? I'm sorry?
Well, it just says the town has received five letters summarizing that most are in support of the project but have concerns about parking on Mount Vernon Street and Congress Place. And I just wondered what letters you had received by that date.
Right. And so my question is, is that something you would like to have put into the minutes?
I I would.
Okay.
We can look it up and put it in if.
Yeah, I. So if we, I think we can do that. Brian, if you could figure out which five letters you were speaking of.
Yeah.
Okay, any other amendments? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, September 20th, 2021 as amended? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So roll call vote, please. Sally Dale.
I.
Eeching Scott.
I.
Cheryl Wolf.
I.
Kurt Spring.
I.
And Deobgerius says I as well. So Eeching, if you could send that correction to Nancy to make sure it gets in. And Brian, you send it. Thank you. Next one is Tuesday, October 5th. And are there any corrections to this one?
Sally has one. I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
On page two, item two, ZBA petition, Lot Two, Robbie, Abbey Road. The second sentence begins, the applicant wants the developer to go through, and I believe it's the petitioner. Not the applicant. Like, right? Does that make sense?
Oh, let's see. Yes, I believe that that should be petitioner. So. Okay. Any other, any other edits? Okay. Would somebody please move to approve the minutes of Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, please, as amended? Second, please.
Second.
Second.
Good.
Yep. Roll call vote, please. Kurt?
I.
Sally?
I.
Eeching?
I.
Cheryl.
I.
And Deob says I as well. And Sally, if you could please send that edit to Nancy.
I will do so. Thank you.
And our very last one, we're being insanely efficient this evening. We'll make up for it later, I'm sure. Minutes for Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Any edits?
This is the one I think. Oh, go ahead.
Eeching, was that?
Okay, so the six Rocky Ledge subdivision and the bullet points of some of the comments from the planning board, the last one says, what the town needs is not what the community prefers. I would change that community to what the town needs is not what the immediate neighbors prefer.
I believe that is what the, yes, I would agree with that change. Everyone else?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sally, did you have one?
Yeah, it was just, I just would, I just wanted clarification on what we thought was meant by the fourth bullet. These are two different uses between a park and a neighborhood. Prefer to see affordable housing. I do remember that there was a conversation about preferring to see affordable housing, but I didn't know what the first sentence of that bullet meant.
I wonder if it was my comment about the juxtaposition of these single family housing with a public park. It's front, it was just incongruous to me.
Right. Okay, well, that that helps me understand it. Thank you.
Is that something that we should clarify in the minutes?
I don't think so. I think it's fine. I just.
Okay. Well, then would somebody please make a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, October 12th, 2021 as amended?
Removed.
I'm so moved. Okay, thank you, Sally. Is there a second? Okay, my internet connection is really horrible, so I only heard one of those, so.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a move in a second. Let's do a roll call vote. Kurt?
I.
Sally?
I.
Cheryl?
I.
Eeching? And Deob says I. So Eeching, if you could pass that correction on to Nancy. Thank you very much. So we are all done with that. Thank you very much. That was very efficient. We are now moving on to our continued public hearing on 10 Congress Place. Brian, would you be so kind to put up the schedule? Because I think it has a layout of how we were hoping this evening's discussion would go.
You mean the agenda or something?
Agenda.
The one that I sent out today?
Oh, yeah. No, I do have that. I will say that Philip Chen of ABA and Bayeux Architects did just enter the room. So
Excellent.
We're running a few minutes behind Philip. I'm just gonna get the schedule up. Just give me a minute.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Evening.
Yay, it worked for the first time. Okay, so this evening we have I believe. Yes, we have an hour and some to discuss 10 Congress Place. So we, the breakdown, I'm hoping, is that we will spend 30 minutes interviewing our two prospective consultants. We'll spend around 15 minutes discussing that and making a selection. We will be having a discussion of what actual guidance we will be providing to the consultant at a later meeting. I think we need a lot more time to deal with that. Then we're going to hand over the podium to the applicants for 10 Congress to provide some feedback to the feedback they got last time. And then we will talk about how we will schedule the upcoming hearings on 10 Congress. So why don't we jump right into our discussion with our design consultants and Brian, hand it up.
Yeah, so I'm sorry. So Philip, Deob's having some connection issues this evening, but so welcome. So you you are here because the the board recognized ABA as a potential peer review consultant. I, we've, we've had two meetings, you and I. I kind of gave you the lay of the land of the project about the Center Business District. The design guidelines, the fact that we're kind of looking for experience with working with downtowns and working with municipalities through some type of a peer review process, and we wanted to kind of get your experience with those kind of two specific things. If you wanted to introduce yourself and kind of let us, let us know where you think you could fit in.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. I know we have a short time to speak, and so what I thought we could do is I could use the first part of our time to tell you a little bit about ABA, about N Bayeux Architects, our experience working in town centers and with projects that deal with similar issues to 10 Congress Place and how we would handle this engagement. Then I'd like to tell you a little bit about my own, my own experience, my personal experience, working with these kind kinds of projects and with peer reviewers and other architects. Most importantly, I'd like to hear from you, answer any questions you might have about what our proposed approach to this project would be. Does that sound like a good use of our time?
Yeah.
Yes.
That'd be great, and hopefully we'll have enough time for there to be some questions from the board. So great.
Sure, sure. So just first, a little bit about N Bayeux Architects. We're a minority owned firm based in Boston with about 40 years of architectural and planning experience for civic, cultural, and educational clients. We have four principals and eight associates, and we have, you know, a very, very talented and qualified 42 person staff. We work in cities and towns where heritage is combined with progress. We've worked on more than 80 buildings and sites on the National Register of Historic Places or are situated in national historic districts, and that includes 28 national historic landmarks. So our planning and design process is one that's grounded in research. We develop a deep understanding of a project's physical and cultural history. You know, focusing on sense of place. Another thing is that our projects are situated solidly in the public realm. So we work in capital cities around the world, town centers throughout New England, a lot of public projects, public library projects. We have public library projects in Cambridge, in Arlington, Peterborough, and New Hampshire. I just finished two studies for branch libraries in the West End and Eggleston Square neighborhoods for the Boston Public Library and the Department of Neighborhood Development. And these two studies examine mixed use development, looking at combining these branch libraries with affordable and market rate housing. This would be a first really for the city of Boston. But each one of these projects examine issues of development in neighborhoods where community or scale and and sense of place are important. And so this is a passion of ours at ABA, it's a passion of mine, too. I live in nearby Arlington, so I understand how important it is for a town to meet the demands for new demands really for development and diversity. So if you were to engage N Bayeux Architects as a peer reviewer for this project, it would be me. I would be the one performing the analysis and conducting the peer reviews. So a little bit about me, about myself. I'm the president of N Bayeux Architects, and as a principal, I work on many of our key projects. I was the principal in charge for our library projects in Arlington and for the city of Boston. I'm actually speaking to you tonight from Thessaloniki, Greece, where I'm the lead designer for a major rehabilitation of the US consulate here. I and I'll be in working, I'll be in Athens later this week, where we are also rehabilitating and expanding the US Embassy, which is a historic building listed on the Secretary Secretary of State's Register of Culturally Significant Property. But one of the reasons I'm mentioning these projects that I'm working on right now is because in our work with the State Department, we custom, we, you know, we typically engage with a panel of peer reviewers in our work, architects, engineers, historians, that review and help guide our designs. Another another project type that we regularly engage in peer reviews with other architects is our college and university clients. We've done so at Cornell, at University of Pennsylvania, and Harvard. Most recently, actually, just last week, we had a ribbon cutting for a project at Harvard Divinity School, which was reviewed by the Cambridge Historical Commission, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals. And in that project, we also went through a peer review process that and the project was reviewed by two very prominent architects, also that were also working in Harvard. So projects that I've led for the Smithsonian Institution, working in Washington DC, have also been presented to the National Capital Planning Commission, the Commission of Fine Arts, and the DC State Historic Preservation Office. So, you know, I am familiar with going through these types of review processes, working with peer reviewers. And I'm familiar with navigating these different review processes, trying to find a consensus around shared value and goals. So that that's just a little bit about ABA, a little bit about our experience, a little bit about my personal experience. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have about about us, about me, about our approach.
Well, great. Thanks for that. Still not sure. I'm not sure if Deob's audio is still working, but we have about another eight to 10, you know, eight to 10 minutes. We started a little late, so we got another about eight to 10 minutes. So I think the hope was that we could go around the room, and if there are any questions, we literally just go, you know, go around. So Cheryl, you're first in my area here. Why don't you, if you have any questions, why don't you just go right ahead?
Yeah, nice to meet you, Philip.
Hi, Cheryl.
Mr. Chen. I'm, I'm might just have a simple question, and that is if you have had experience or engaged with either the developer who has been proposing the 10 Congress Place or David Hossin and his his studio in a, in, as they're the design behind, behind 10 Congress.
Sure, a good question, Cheryl. We have not had any engagements with Beal or with David Hossin. I did tell Brian at one time that we had spoken with Gillespie at one time when this project was very early on. They were looking at our checks, but we did not, and we were not selected, so not engaged with them. David Hossin, I know more as a peer as another Boston architect, but we have never had any engagements with them.
And in terms of Boston, have you developed any design or worked any on any projects with involving housing? You mentioned two mixed use library and housing projects that you're doing currently. I find that really very interesting. And so I was wondering, some of the precedents that Hossin and Associates have have given the town to look at in terms of the scale of what they're proposing involves a scale in the back bay, for instance. Of course, that doesn't have a mixed use component necessarily, but it is the scale of the building that we're looking at that that, you know, has caused a lot of you know, consternation and, you know, questions. So I'm just sort of curious if you have that type of experience in the Boston area.
We do have experience working in Boston, not with you know, multifamily housing. Our housing experience in Boston now probably is limited to student residential housing, which we did for the New England Conservatory. Their new student performance and residential center, which is about 250 beds. But a mid level, a middle, a mid rise building, you know, in downtown Boston.
Okay, thanks. I'll let other people go. Sorry, Brian.
Okay, Sally?
I think the the question that's in my mind right now, because I actually have never worked specifically from the start with a peer review process. So this is very interesting for me, is what you come is what you come to the table with, with an understanding of the town of Winchester. And it's probably helpful that you live in Arlington, but whether or not you do, I just want to know what you already know about our town.
Well, you know, driven through your town a lot. So I think what I bring to it, and fair enough, Sally, whether I live in Arlington or not, we do work in towns like Winchester around. And so we understand that, as I said, that these, that towns are faced with demands for development, for housing, for diversity, and really just for elevating public life in them. Understanding that this site is in a really, really great site downtown, which can use development. It's at a very critical, you know, transit nexus. So it's very important and important that it's done right. So, you know, as I said, we do work around in many towns around New England. We do work in many cities around the world. So I think just understanding, we bring to it an approach, which is about understanding a certain place, a location, and all the issues, the various issues, I know there are many around them, and trying to navigate the design process with those.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you.
Yicheng.
Mr. Chen.
Hi.
For coming, really appreciate you taking the time out and considering this. You know, this project is tough. There, because there are so many opposing forces. There's, you know, the desire to preserve what you call heritage and tradition, some people say character, history, with the idea of progress or development, right, to bring in some, some things that perhaps the heritage has excluded over the years or, or sort of, I think the main driver of this is housing, right, and to build some affordable as well as middle, missing middle housing. And I think, you know, that those, those opposing forces, and I think that they're opposing, but I'm, I'm interested in what your, what your approach is, as you said you would talk about, but, you know, the preservation versus the development and how you would, in the, in the design, kind of tools or approach that, or even in sort of conversation, how you, your firm approaches that and sort of connect those two.
Yeah, you know, I also, thank you, Yicheng. I also sit on the Boston Preservation Alliance, the Board of the Boston Preservation Alliance. So we do address many of those same kinds of concerns around the city of Boston. You know, and what I, I think that preservation is not in of itself opposed to progress. And the question comes around a lot to what it is, what is it that we're trying to preserve? Or enhance, or even, or even advance? So, you know, I think it's about finding what those common goals are. And rather than the things that might appear to be in opposition, but there actually might be ways to move forward, common goals around our towns. You know, housing is about bringing vitality, it's about bringing life as well as, you know, economics, but it's about making our town centers lively, vibrant. So I think it's about finding a way to proceed on those things, that, those shared, those shared goals.
Thank you.
And not to put too much pressure on Kurt and D M here, but we are running a little low on time. So, but Kurt, why don't you go ahead and then we'll finish with D M.
I'll drive me quick. Philip, great to meet you. Thank you for joining us tonight, all the way from Greece. That's impressive. I think it's pretty late there. But my, my quick question, I want to put a finer point maybe on Yicheng's question, which is, we are, I think, trying to balance this idea of like, scale being, I think, a big, big, big concern and big, you know, a big voice of opposition from the community, with also character fitting within the community, which I think ties to the store preservation piece. Do you have like a specific example of, you know, a project perhaps you've worked on that has had some of these forces in play, where you've had to try and, you know, come up with something that is a new development with some scale, but also, you know, balances in historic elements? I did go to your website briefly, not knowing what you've worked on. I noticed there's a lot of really beautiful, impressive, modern architecture. I was just curious if there was one specific project you could point to that maybe is similar to some of the elements we're describing here.
You know, thank you for that question, Kurt. And I won't try to take too much time thinking of the exact project, which might fit what you all are talking about here, but it is something that we wrestle with. You know, how many of our projects, if you look at our website, are deal with sometimes additions or expansions onto historic buildings? Just some projects, list some projects that I've worked on recently. So when you look at them, you can tell that they're my projects. You know, I did just finish this building at Harvard Divinity School, where we expanded nineteen eleven collegiate Gothic building. I recently finished a project at Springfield Technical Community College, where we adapted a nineteenth century's building, actually, military building. I'm also working at the University of Pennsylvania right now for an expansion to some buildings there on their main campus, as well as having finished a project there, the music building. So if you look at some of those projects, you know, all of these are about additions, expansions to historic buildings, many of them in urban centers. And so you can take a look at those as well as, you know, this project that we're working on in Athens, the rehabilitation and expansion of the US Embassy. I hope that answers your question, Kurt. It's not one single project that maybe matches all the things here. What I'd say is all of the, all of these projects involved historic review and the idea of how do you bring something from the past, many, many of these, you know, adapting them, renovating and adapting them for some new uses, and expand on them, maintaining the historic character and scale.
Thank you. That's great.
Okay. Brian, I am on both phone and Zoom. Could you unmute my phone? I can't unmute it.
We have rest star six.
Okay, thank you. Am I audible?
Go right ahead, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, Philip, for joining us this evening. I will be really quick. I just, everyone has pretty much asked most of my questions. The one thing that, that really is, comes to the forefront for this project with me, for me, is that this is really the first large project in downtown, the core of Winchester for a very long time. And so there is a lot of concern and worry and uncertainty about the impact that this project will have on what people have viewed Winchester as being for generations, or at least people's perceptions of what Winchester has been. So kind of getting back to, I mean, what you've described, a lot of large projects in urban areas which have seen development, where people are used to that sort of development. And I know you may not have this at your fingertips. Could you perhaps describe something where you were walking, you walked into a situation where you had this community that was really very new to this process in a sense? And explain how you would go about bringing the sides, everyone together?
Now, I mean, I, I just want to distinguish, you know, these projects that you see on our website. Of course, we came in as designers, and you're absolutely right, D M, that, you know, as we come in as designers, that is one of our goals, to bring these projects and develop them as well as communicate them to a community that may not be used to this kind of development or seeing anything new at all. I'd say that, you know, working in Cambridge for the Harvard Divinity School, which is right on the edge of, really on the edge of the campus, and in a residential neighborhood. So we did work with the, the neighborhood groups there, president of the neighborhood council, doing walkthroughs through the site describing the project, you know, working with the planning board in Cambridge. And also just with, with neighbors, just individual neighbors, both in meetings as well as in individual meetings. So it is about kind of bringing together all the different stakeholders. When we did bring that project to the zoning board of appeals, we did have letters from the Cambridge Historic Commission, as well as from, you know, ten different, you know, stakeholders in support of the project, which we got, which was approved. So, so that's one project, you know, Cambridge, which you know is, is very, has a very committed and passionate face as well of residents. We also did a project for the University of Chicago, which I worked on, you know, in Hyde Park, which in some ways is very similar in terms of the base of residents that were engaged in the project. So, you know, I think part of it is about acknowledging what is important to the neighbors, to the stakeholders, listening, and trying to address those through, through your, through the communication and the design. Now, again, these are, you know, these are projects where we were designers, and we were the lead designers. And so we were working in that way. It's a little bit different, I think, in the engagement that we're talking about as a peer reviewer, really how to mediate between your designer and this, and you, the board. So, but I do have, I'm open to the idea of advising, you know, both sides, mediating and bridging, however, it would be helpful to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you.
There's a delay here. Brian, I'm going to let you M C for a while longer, please.
Sure. So Philip, I thought that was a really productive conversation. I think everyone got a lot of answers. And so thank you so much for your time. We are going to kind of roll in, unfortunately, to our, to our next candidate. But I wanted to thank you again for coming, and we really appreciate your time, especially like said, you're, it's probably almost, almost coffee time for you. Anyway, so really appreciate your time, and I will be in touch shortly.
Well, thank you all. I hope you have a good evening. Thank you very much. And let me know if you have any more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Appreciate you.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening all.
Good evening. I, I do believe Dennis is, is here. And there he is. Hey, Dennis. So, welcome. Just, we're just going to keep rolling right along here. So we are, we are about, you know, we were about, actually ended up being fifteen minutes behind. So I think we're just going to keep rolling with the same amount of time that we gave the previous candidate, and we'll have about, it was, you know, about eighteen or nineteen minutes here. So just like the Philip Chen, I, I've talked to Dennis and have told him the, the kind of the situation that we're in, and that we would really like to just have him here to talk about his experiences with town center, working in town centers, and experiences with peer review. For those in the audience that don't know, the design guidelines that are in our zoning bylaw and in our rules and regulations, these actually were contracted out to Dennis. So Dennis helped us write those in twenty fifteen and in twenty eighteen as well. Anyway, Dennis Carlon, welcome, welcome back. Why don't you introduce yourself to the people who don't know you, and how you feel your experience working with town centers and other peer review entities could lend to this project?
Thank you, Brian. Hello. I'm sorry I haven't met some of you in person, but hopefully I'll have that opportunity. I'm an architect and urban designer, town designer. I've studied new urbanism. I was one of the first new urbanists licensed in, in New England. I think they call it certified. So I've worked in construction. My father was superintendent in, in housing. I worked for I M Pay. When I learned that urban design was very, very important, I worked on the National Gallery of Art for two and a half years, the design of it. I was a junior designer. And then I worked for one of the largest housing architects in the country, a firm you might not know, Davis Brody, and learned a lot about mixed-income, mixed-use housing there. That was in New York. I came to Harvard, studied urban design, town design. And after graduating, I was given the opportunity for the East Cambridge Riverfront. If you know the Leachmere Canal or the Galleria Shopping Center, that's my project. It's forty acres. And it became known as a national model of how to build adjacent to an historic neighborhood. It won some of the highest awards nationally. I did the design, which I'm happy to show people anytime. I gave a tour to previous board members. And learned a lot. I did guidelines, I did design review, I set the images. I did designs for renderings to convey the images of the riverfront and on. And that was a contract with the city of Cambridge that lasted thirty years, which is pretty much unheard of. I worked for five different heads of their planning department, community development, and met a lot of developers. And in the end, the developers themselves became the biggest advocate for design review and said things like, "We hope you'll hold other people to the same quality standard." I, and I did. And one other thing I want to mention is the East Cambridge Historic Neighborhood. They don't call themselves historic, but I'm conveying that it was built in the eighteenth and nineteenth, I'm sorry, in the nineteenth and early twentieth centuries. It was one of only three, or was it four? I'm sorry, I can't remember now. Four neighborhoods in the country in the eighties and nineties that supported major development next door on the forty acres along the riverfront. And the Lincoln Land Institute did a study about that thick of how that was, and they asked me. And I said, "I went there, I listened, and incorporated their needs." And their needs were very different than in Winchester, was getting truck traffic out of the neighborhood, getting parking for the county courthouse, saving some historic structures, the Bullfinch Courthouse, getting access to the river and expanding open space. We did all that as part of the plan. It's built. It's a hundred percent, well, ninety-five percent built. There's one more little site that's going to happen. I quit in two thousand and six, after thirty years, because frankly, the, I was working for the planning board. The planning board stopped listening to my comments. And I went on and did work in Chelsea, Boston. Similar work would be Plymouth, which was the downtown. Their scale is more like Winchester's. And there I did a scheme. It was a public space plan that they wanted, and I cooperated proposed buildings. And it won a regional award and got a ninety-eight And it won a regional award and got a 98% vote in favor by the town meeting of what I produced. And I thought this was going to be the next great project because this was in 2008 and 2020 was the 400th celebration of the landing of the pilgrims. Well, they have some serious downtown problems and I incorporated solutions into all of them, including continuous retail, incorporating parking hidden behind facades of real housing, one dimensional housing. Incorporated a tramway, a number of different things. And they were all excited. And then the fellow who was heading the project left. And that was the end of my experience with Plymouth. And so what I'm getting to is my experience with Winchester was in part by my choice. I've been a consultant since 2012. We did a study of Waterford, Waterfield Site, and then we did one on Main Street. And then I was hired to do one near the laundry building. And then asked to do the work that Brian called out. I've also done design review in East Cambridge, about 30 projects. We won awards for that as well because there's a continuity of buildings and, and architectural scale and character, which to me is essential. I'm proud of buildings that I changed dramatically. If you know the Galleria Cambridge Side Shopping Center, it went through 26 different designs before they did what we proposed. And it was the most successful shopping center in greater Boston, greater New England, because everything was that great. It wasn't raised like other shopping centers with parking under it. We incorporated 13 acres of new open space in the East Cambridge 40 acres. That was part of the urban design, town design, and that became incorporated. We incorporated public amenities within that. Again, I'd be happy to show you. In Plymouth, we completely re-proposed what the waterfront was, related much more to Plymouth Plantation where, where the original plantation was. And even Plymouth Plantation said their books would double in profit or income if what we did was proposed and actually happened. I was a consultant to Boston retail districts. I think it was about eight years. And I worked in about five districts, restoring buildings, retail buildings, as well as doing master plans of district. If you know Grove Hall in Roxbury, Dorchester, I did a plan for that. That sadly could have been built, but I won't go into that now. So I'm doing a report now for myself on what makes a successful project. And part of it is continuity. Obviously, I'm going to say that because I want to continue, but it's continuity of boards, continuity of staff and continuity of beliefs. I also worked on the zoning parameters. Brian didn't mention that. You, I think you've seen the summary report that I did, which showed proposed schemes for each of the areas. I know the dimensions and possibilities in each of the development zones. And since then, I've done other design review for the Board of Zoning Appeal through you, the board, as well as a 40B housing project on, is it River Street or Water Street? I can't recall now. 200.
Yeah, no, it was River Street. But while I have a second here, I will say that we, I know the board is eagerly waiting to, excuse me, to potentially ask you some questions. So I think we're going to go in reverse order this time. So Dea, why don't you start and then we'll go then Kurt after. It's about two minutes apiece at the most here. And then we're going to have to move on to our next agenda item, which is discussing this, but we were running out of, out of time here. So Dea, why don't you take it away?
Well, I will actually, I have worked with Dennis before and I have, I think I have a really good idea of Dennis's talents and capabilities. So why don't I pay my time to the rest so they can ask questions?
Great. Thank you. Kurt, Kurt, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah. Hi, Dennis. Nice to, nice to meet you over Zoom. So question, which is similar to what I asked the last candidate is, I'm going to try and tweak it a little bit here, but I think one thing that we're really interested in getting some insights on here is, you know, the question of scale and how it relates to the site, how it relates to what, you know, the PUD is trying to accomplish, as well as trying to balance that with, you know, seamlessly integrating a new development into an existing, you know, historic environment that everyone really values. Do you, is there a specific project, I guess, that you have worked on? Do you think in terms of like size, you know, a village feel, that would give us a sense of maybe your, your expertise? Or is there any sort of, I guess, other explanation or other sort of example of experience that you think might be helpful and helping us understand how you could really add a lot of value to this process?
Well, thank you. Good question. And I'm actually known for making intimate buildings. I don't know if you've looked up any of my work, but every one of my projects reflect its setting and have an intimate scale to it. It's one of the things I learned from earlier work. The East Cambridge Riverfront, the whole first street edge originally was only four stories tall. And that was to mesh with the existing warehouses and a block away are the 19th century residential buildings and historic courthouse. It is dictated in every case by zoning, which the town approved in this case. And in my case, in East Cambridge, it was approved by the city council, which by the way, I became a member of eight years ago because nobody was doing this kind of work in the city at all anymore. So if you look at my work, you will, design work. Hybridon is an example. It's, it's now owned by MIT. It's a building that has character and, and it has a mixture of materials. I'm a big masonry guy. And the window proportions, the type of introduction of granite or limestone or precast to make it look like limestone, the character at the top of the building, even the shape of the roofs. My work has, I do a lot of slanted roofs, which to me adds tremendous village appeal. And if you look at the designs I did for the study for Win, for all the studies for Winchester, you will see slanted roofs. As far as the buildings that have been reviewed by the board previously, all of them addressed the guidelines and the zoning pretty faithfully. You might not like the height, but unfortunately that's, or fortunately, that's what the zoning allowed. And so if we're going to change that, we have to change the zoning or they can challenge it in court. But that is where we stand. So I have to blend in each case. I have to be quick here. I know we have to answer quickly. I have to blend zoning, guidelines, the board's opinion on things, and I share that with each architect and developer and what the architect is offering. As I said, I'm a big contextual guy. It's one reason why the Main Street project and saved that wooden structure. Frankly, I didn't in my scheme. But the board wanted it saved, so that changed a number of issues. So it's diligence, it's following through. I consider myself a traditional architect, even though my buildings are varied. They, they vary to the location. So there's mass and there's detail and character and warmth. And, you know, there's some great buildings that are bigger than anything around it by a story or two, but they're broken down in a way that makes them very human. And that's my goal.
Thanks for that, Dennis. So we're going to go I Ching, Sally, and then Cheryl in the next seven minutes.
Thanks so much, Dennis. Nice to meet you. I feel like, hi, I feel like we have an embarrassment of riches here with, with experience. So thank you very much for coming before us. I, since you have a, an intimate working relationship with the developer, or you've been on projects or as a design peer review with this developer, as well as understanding some of the town dynamics, going through Fels Hardware. And some of, I, I think that you know a lot about 10 Converse, but what are a couple of main challenges, I think, that you see in this particular project, 10 Converse? And how would you, in this position as a design review, peer review, help, help it along?
Well, I was, thank you for the question. I was, I'll be honest here. I was very surprised when the former board, before Cheryl got on it, said they wanted to see an example of six stories on that site. I was stunned, to be honest. And maybe none of those people are still on the board. And I, it's, it's, it's set a precedent for the developer to consider that, hey, we can get some height here. So number one, what you say really is important. And I try to honor that whoever I'm representing, whatever town, and there are other towns I've worked with that I haven't told you about. And the one thing that still bothers me is if you look at my drawings, you will see I had more open space along the water's edge. And every project I work on, it isn't just buildings. It's building an open space, public space network. And they've responded reasonably. They have a very talented landscape architect who I've known for years and respect his work very, very much. I know the board, previous boards were concerned after saying six might be all right with even five stories. But the way that building is set back at the top is truly exceptional and expensive, to be honest. And and part of my job, quite frankly, even on the Main Street, the hardware site, is to maintain that quality, to not let them cheapen up the project when they realize they can't necessarily do everything. So I would say the challenge is finding a massing that appeases the board's instinct, at least the past board's instinct. But I think the comment about six stories frankly misdirected it. And I like the architecture of both buildings. It's not what I would do. I don't push myself. I try to enhance unless it's way off base, like the shopping center was in East Cambridge. By the way, there was no windows in the first shopping center in East Cambridge design. That's how bad it was. So I hope I answered. It's, it's a tough project. The other thing I want to maintain, I don't know if you know, but there were economic development studies done and the town center can easily support a need for 20,000 square feet of retail. Now people go out of town for those uses and over 200 units of housing. So that's also part of the program.
Thank you.
They're not so sure they want to do that retail. And I'm telling them, no, you have to. So I have to, I can be the bad cop is I guess what I'm saying.
Sally and then Cheryl.
Thank you, Brian. It's nice to see you, Dennis. Thanks. My question is how you see the path forward? How to reconcile the public's perception of this building being not well suited to the site with your instinct to not want to push, just advise? How did you say it? Unless, you know, way off base. So I'm really curious to know how you see the path forward? If you were chosen to continue in your role as the peer review architectural consultant for the planning board?
I think you have to change the zoning. If that is how the board feels, and, and believe me, these developers are going to say they bought their, they haven't spoken to me about this. I, I don't owe them anything. Brian will tell you and hopefully Dea that I've worked for the town. I don't work for a developer. We have to change what the plan is basically. And I don't mean my work, I mean the zoning because they have a case going to court that. So if we're willing to do that, I will work with that. I mean, I feel I represent you as a group and I work with Brian representing you and the town and even the select people who I've met a few of. So, you know, when, when East Cambridge was done, I'm going to go back to that because you can see it. My plan for the riverfront was 85 foot tall buildings because that was the nicest, highest buildings in Cambridge about that plateau. And the council at the time put it up to 120 because they spoke to the developers. Now, in Cambridge, you probably know there are buildings 250 feet tall, not in my area, but in Kendall Square, which I think is completely wrong. So I am not a housing, I'm sorry, a height enthusiast. I think buildings should be as much as human scaled as possible. And I, I do what we can work on, given the zoning. And I can't fight the zoning. I mean, I could for you, but we got to change the zoning if that's what the board feels is necessary. But everything I do, I try to make intimate and feel like a good neighbor. And I promise you, if we continue, it will be a good blending of new and old. We're not going, you're not going to find a developer building two stories or three stories unless the zoning says that. And you'll have less developers coming in if you want to do housing. Housing needs a critical number over 30 to 40 to make sense. I, I've done 2,000 units of housing and those are one of the rules I've learned. I don't know if I answered Sally, but it really comes down to the zoning.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Dennis.
All right, Cheryl.
Do we have time?
If you have one quick question, and then I think that's, if you have a quick.
Yeah, I, I think I'll just ask what I, Dennis, thank you for all of your, your insight. Hello. And I know from, I know you to, to a certain degree. I'm, I'm curious whether or not you have done any peer work with David Hossin's studio before?
No.
Our interaction?
No. Okay. That was easy.
There you go. Thank you.
All right. So so Dennis, we, we, the hearing is still on right now. We are planning on talking with the developer. The board is now going to try to engage in a discussion about where to go from here. And Dea, I'm wondering if we need to change around a little things in the agenda in terms of just time allotted to try to get through this because I think we do need to have this full 55 minutes, if we could, with, for the rest of this hearing, which.
Could I, could I just end with one minute of comment? I want you to know when I became a city councillor in Cambridge, that I pretty much closed my practice and the only client I kept was Winchester. For what it's worth, this is my focus other than my council work. That's because of the continuity all the way through. And I've been offered other work. I tell Brian about some of it, but I'll, I'll let it go there. I just want you to understand that. This is important to me. It's not just another job.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you. Okay. Take care, everyone. Have a good meeting.
Thank you so much. Have a good one and congratulations on the recent election.
Thank you.
Diab, back to you. So basically, we're 20 minutes behind, but I think, I don't want to shorten the hearing. Meaning we had given about 50 minutes to talk about, you know, for the rest of this time. So the hope is that we could potentially still do that.
Why don't, Brian, could you put back up that schedule? Because I, it would help me visually understand what we've planned on doing where we're at.
Sure, wait, hold on. Okay. You should be seeing it. So we were going to then talk for 45 minutes for the rest, so 45 minutes for the rest of this time.
Okay, so I think that, and so we were supposed to be done with this at 9:10. So we have approximately half an hour left. Can I not do math? Am I missing something?
Yeah, I mean, we should be going till 9:30 with this. I think we should go for another 45 minutes.
Okay, if we go for another 45 minutes, then we need to do the ZBA permit. Abbey Road is shortened, I believe. I think we can, why don't we just, why don't we finish this out? Let's keep this going. And then we will squeeze the rest down. Maybe we'll move the master plan implementation committee to our next meeting, which will give us another 15 minutes. So yes, why don't we set, so what is our, can we do the math and figure out when we actually need to get done by? So we can.
Let's, let's, let's go 45 minutes from now, which would be in 9:30.
At 9:30, okay. So we're going until 9:30. So why don't we, it's now time for the board to have a discussion about our two candidates for design consultants. So why don't we, why don't we give everyone a couple of minutes? We'll go around and then we can have a discussion after everyone has had their say. So I'd say two minutes for everyone. And why don't we do this in reverse alphabetical order, just to make it difficult for me? Cheryl, looks like you're the, I'll go by last name. Cheryl, you are the first up.
I think it wasn't the math, Diab. Let's see, W is pretty easy. I'm always last, almost. So. Thank you. So wow, on the one hand, we've got an amazing firm like Anbeha and Philip Chen, who varies sophisticated architects. And I don't doubt that he has every capability of communicating on both sides to the public of Winchester in a very eloquent and sophisticated way and to another architect as well. And I know that, you know, David Hossin is a, is a well-known architect in the Boston area. He's built quite a name for himself. And so I imagined, you know, collaborating with him as a peer is going to be, is going to have its own challenges. So I, I, I think that Anbeha's history is very grounded in preservation. And in terms of the town, I think that's also going to be very, very useful in terms of how we understand the problems that we have ahead of us. Dennis Carlon has all the history of doing work for the town. And I certainly appreciate all that he's done. I also, he obviously has depth of knowledge about, about public, you know, a town like Winchester, or a town like Winchester and a city like Cambridge are very different in terms of how they operate. And, but I've seen him do very well with Winchester. He's very well spoken. He's able to navigate issues in front of the town when we're, when we're working through design and through questions. But I just, I don't think he's going to bring a new breadth to this particular problem. And I think that what we have in front of us is a very important site that's going to need some retail that's going to be, need to be really thoughtful in order to make this a really valuable mixed-use building. We need the housing, but we also need mixed use. And I think that's the, one of the biggest weaknesses. I think that there are new types of mixed use out there. And I think that Philip Chen may be a little closer to understanding what that is than Dennis is. Dennis, Dennis is grounded in an older style of, of new urbanism, he called it. That's kind of been around for a really long time. So I'm more in, in favor of hiring Philip Chen.
Okay.
Just to get right to the point, right? Might as well.
And you were two and a half minutes, so that's pretty good, too. Let's see, next is, if I get my alphabet right, Kurt.
I, I think Cheryl summarized my view really well. I kind of just want to say ditto. I think, I think both are extremely talented, bring different skillsets. I do think, and I don't have the benefit of having as much history as, you know, as some other members here. But my, you know, my sense is that, you know, we're trying to get perhaps a little bit of a fresh perspective here and some potentially, you know, maybe, maybe new, new ideas might be too strong, but at least like a little bit of a, you know, a new viewpoint from a very seasoned professional that maybe helps us ensure that this is, you know, the, you know, the key and important development that it needs to be in downtown Winchester. So I think, one thing I heard is that I do think, you know, it'll be a little bit harder for Dennis to have a truly fresh perspective, given perhaps his background and having worked with the, you know, the prior board and having, you know, worked so extensively on the, on the project and the zoning. And I think that I probably would, would also support, you know, working with Philip Chen and having perhaps a more fresh set of eyes on this to get just a different perspective. I do think the onus would be on, I think it's maybe us or on Brian or maybe all of us, just to keep him, you know, sort of focused on, on the issues that I think are really critical, you know, in this project, which I think we've talked about, scale, consistency with the environment and also taking into account the PUD zoning and making sure we're just being thoughtful and fair to the town. So I think that would be incumbent on us, so this doesn't just become like a design exercise. But that's, that's my view.
Okay, thank you. Peaching, you are next.
I still think that it's, it was fabulous that we got both candidates and really wonderful to have such skillsets. But I think that, you know, Philip's, Mr. Chen's strengths are in that he's in the practice. He's, he's, his major focus is design. And, you know, he's in the contemporary world of that. And I think that, you know, it sounds like to me, but he seemed to have said otherwise. You know, his, his clients have been really elite institutions like Harvard, Smithsonian. And perhaps, you know, the down and dirty of his town, you know, stuff isn't as familiar. But I don't doubt that he would be able to rise to the occasion. And, you know, Mr. Cologne, he, you know, he is so knowledgeable about Winchester and dedicated. You know, perhaps this job in particular isn't as suited. I think that his zoning comments were really interesting. And his sort of background in helping the town do that is, is really helpful. But in this particular job, I feel like we really need somebody who is in design contemporary in that practice currently. So I too think that Mr. Chen would be a better fit for this particular job.
Okay, thank you. Sally.
You're muted.
You want to skip the letter J in the alphabet?
Yeah, my, my opinion is, is I prefer to listen to the board.
So I agree with all the previous members of the board. And my particular focus is on, well, the reasons behind the need for a fresh perspective. The project has taken a long time to get to the point that it's now at. And there continues to be community concern about the scale and character, to quote words from the zoning bylaw of the building. And for that to have endured for that length of time with the current design consultant speaks to the need perhaps for, well, in fact, in my mind for sure, for a new perspective and a fresh look at the circumstances and the process and the issues. So I would be in favor of hiring Mr. Chen. That's it.
Wow, thank you. That was very succinct. Well, it probably, it'll not be surprising to the longer-term board members, but I am in favor of retaining Mr. Cologne. I believe he does have a sense of the intimacy required of that site and of the design constraints and obstacles. I think that most of what we are seeing before us now in the current design is the result of the former board being unable to come to a consensus as to which direction they wanted this project to go. And that lack of consensus led to an inability to provide the design consultants with a clear direction. And if this board can come up with a clear direction for the design, I think either consultant would do well. I just think that Mr. Cologne has a unique perspective on the situation. I think one of the things that there's a tension within this design is that the zoning bylaws are in conflict with themselves. On one side, it talks about scale and context. On the other side, it says you can build a building as tall as you'd like as long as you meet these particular criteria. And so those two bits are hard to reconcile. And when Mr. Cologne was speaking about doing things within the zoning and not getting sued, I think that's a difficult thing that this board will have to come to grips with. Is if the zoning says you can have a certain amount of height, then that's what's allowed. And so one of the difficulties, I think, that the previous board had was trying to reconcile the allowable height and design requirements. So we can't ignore either of them. We have to deal with both of them. And I think even if Mr. Chen were to come on board, which seems to be the direction of the board, he will also have to grapple with this contradiction, I think, in the zoning. So that's my piece. I guess it's a sort of a cautionary thing that when we next meet and we discuss which direction we're going to give the design consultants, we have to speak very clearly, knowing what the constraints are, which are provided by the zoning, and move on. So I think, I don't know that we need to take a vote. I think it's pretty obvious that we have a 4-1 opinion on the board to go ahead with Mr. Chen. But Brian, do you have a parliamentary suggestion? Do you think we need a vote on this?
Yeah, to hire, to hire a specific person. Yeah, to hire a specific person so that we can, yeah, for whatever this means. Not that you've even asked for this, but the only thing I can say is I wish this vote was different. I've written three memos about this, so I won't kind of belabor the point.
Right. Okay, so if someone would please move or provide a motion, which, what is the wording we need to select Philip Chen of, I already cannot get the name of his firm down?
Me, ABA, you can call it, hire Philip Chen of ABA for as a peer review design consultant.
Okay, someone please make that motion.
I will motion that we take a vote to hire Philip Chen of ABA as our design consultant.
For Ten Converse.
For Ten Converse Place hearings.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call votes. Peaching?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And Diab says nay. So we are at 4-1. And this took a lot less than 30 minutes. So I think we're, we've made up time.
No, we did not make up time. That was, that was the whole time that we have for us to talk about scale and character and scheduling and everything. So it wasn't 30 minutes just for that one piece. It was, it was, we have 30 minutes now to finish talking about scheduling out the rest of the meetings. And then, yep.
We still have 10 minutes to hear from our proponents.
Well, yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. We, we, well, just, we have 30 minutes left for those two items, scheduling and the response of, then talking with Admail, Alim Eliaura about the initial public and board comments.
Okay, so we did make up time. I was hoping we had, okay. So at this point, I think that we would like to turn the discussion over to someone from the development team. And I see there are many, many people from the development team on the call this evening, so. And it looks like Mr. Gillespie is going to respond. Welcome.
Well, thank you. I'm certainly present. Thank you for inviting me. This is actually the first time we've had an opportunity to speak to the board since a formal presentation, I think it was two and a half months ago or something. So it is a pleasure. We're very optimistic. We worked through with the board on 6/54 main, a different board, but we were able to work that through. And we can address a number of issues, but we also, it's particularly helpful. I think we have Art Krieger, Town Council, with us this evening. And I was wondering, I'd like to ask Art, with the chair's permission, I'd like to have a dialogue with the board and with Art. And Art, if I'm not mistaken, or Attorney Krieger, forgive me.
Hold on, Mr. Gillespie. What exactly would you like to have a discussion about?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Krieger was involved in writing the zoning. And I just wanted to explore within the script. Mr. Chairman, the script we're dealing with today was not written by this board. It was written by 12 years of study by the town. And it was affirmed by a two-thirds vote of town meeting. Actually, 92% was overwhelming at town meeting. So there have been subjective comments by board members here this evening talking about how disparaged this project is in the public. And I actually have to take, forgive me, a little bit of an issue with that. The two most informed consultants here are the Design Review Committee and the Historical Commission. Actually, on the Design Review Committee, Mr. Storigard is a town meeting member. He was a town meeting member of town meeting in two thousand fifteen. The script you were dealing with today was written over a period of twelve years. It was affirmed by, you have an elected town meeting for a purpose so that these people understand the issues. It's for a purpose. And they heard the planning board presentation by Brian Sekely. If I'm not mistaken, an affirmation from Chair Jurius that you like the idea that the planning board would now be the permit granting authority as opposed to ZBA before. So this script was written. And, and then it was actually codified, if I'm not mistaken, by Attorney Krieger. But this is the script that we're dealing with. And I think some folks like John Subio, who goes back years, Lance Grenson back, Tom Howley, the people who spent hours and hours and days and months and years putting this together would be a little surprised to hear the board say that this zoning, we didn't create this zoning, that somehow, suddenly the town hates this zoning. I think that's highly subjective from some members, forgiveness. So we have design review, virtually unanimous, I think it's unanimous, historical, who are very informed. These are powerful voices. And as we talk about what, you know, now we're talking about changing the zoning. Well, that's a little tricky for us as a developer. So I would like to ask Art, Attorney Krieger, what the guide rails are here? How do we work with each other? What is the dialogue? We have no interest in a lawsuit. We have no interest in conflict. This is the first time I've been allowed to address you. We'd like to find a common ground. But it's not about the color of the brick, if I'm not mistaken. Although if you want to change the color of the brick, we'll do it. But that's why I would love to hear from somebody who sees town meeting, who sees planning boards on a regular basis, who understands this interaction, and ask the attorney what the guardrails are for us. What are we allowed to do here?
Well, Mr. Gillespie, this is the elected board, which, for good or bad, is the board that is in charge of this zoning. I'm sorry, not the zoning. We are the, the permanent grounding authority. So it's this board you have to deal with. This board, I think, understands that we have to work within the existing zoning, that the existing zoning is what applies to your property. So I don't think that there's any doubt about that. I'm not sure what the script is that you're speaking of, but every elected board has its own opinion and those change with time. So what happened twelve years ago, this is a different board. I, I don't know that Mr. Krieger will help give us any enlightenment because this is, this is a process before this board. I mean, this board understands that your building has to meet zoning and it has to meet design criteria. I don't think anyone here is speaking about changing the zoning on your property. I think that it is always right to reconsider previous decisions if we find circumstances have changed. And I think part of good government, governance is to look back and look at things which have worked and look at things which haven't worked and try to move forward based on experience and knowledge. So I think you get this board. In terms of, you, you certainly were privy to the discussions or the, the comments made by the public at the previous hearing. And there was a certain amount of concern about this building, which was, I think this board tonight said that there was a certain amount of concern about the scale of this building. And I think that was true. I don't think we can ignore that. So I, I, you know, I was hoping that you would provide us with some way of moving forward in terms of looking at the concerns that were expressed by the residents in our last meeting and some of the concerns expressed by this board so that we could move forward. I, I. We have a procedures for the hearings, which we have been following. And it's at this point in our procedures where we start to have a discussion. So I don't think that we are out of line in terms of how this hearing is proceeding.
Well, certainly, Mr. Chairman, we respect the board. And as you know, I mean, our, the, the board first met formally on our, or informally, excuse me, on our project in October two thousand nineteen. So, and that was even, I believe, I'm, I don't know if you were on the board then or not, frankly. I guess.
I, I, I was on the board, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it was an interesting meeting to which we were not invited. But the, you and I have been able, the board and our team have been able to work through conversations when we are allowed to have conversations. This is the first conversation that we have actually had. We haven't been allowed to articulate. I'm happy to answer the public's questions. I wish we had had an opportunity to answer the public's questions. We can talk about a couple of those immediately. Traffic, traffic study is in the report. We have zero impact on traffic. Parking, the parking code is point seven five spaces per unit. We have a thirty percent relief should we choose to ask for it, which we haven't if we're near the train station. So we effectively have almost twice the parking that we're required to have. So these are the simple things that we can deal with. What we can't deal with, and I'm sorry to hear the negative comments from the board that really are not about our project, but are about the zoning. So when we look at, you can, it wasn't twelve years ago, forgive me. It, it was two thousand fifteen. You were there. This is in our context of timing and the way these things work. That's a relatively recent zoning. The will of the town is fairly current and it wasn't marginal. It was overwhelming. So you've heard from some people who are negatives. You've also heard, as I point out again, from the people who are most knowledgeable about the process and the project, and they've been quite positive. So we can weigh these out. What I'd like to do is work with the board. But when the board starts with saying, well, we're doing all these things wrong, it's kind of hard. So we're trying to say, well, wait a second. We followed the board's guidance, as you know well. We have listened. We have really tried to listen hard. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars listening to the board and changing and working with Mr. Cologne, who clearly, I mean, this idea that we were working together in some way, we were working together at the behest of the board professionally. And obviously, we take great umbrage as somebody who indicates or implies that there was something other than collegiality in that. Dennis is a top professional. He also is a top peer reviewer. And we look forward to working with Beha. But they have, you know, they're entirely institutional and they have zero residential experience. We're happy to work with them. But if you expect that to change the zoning, that's not going to happen. So we're trying to figure out what the guardrails are, where the board's responsibilities are. And I'm not, I'm not trying to dictate that to you. Forgive me, I'm not. It's just that in our experience, the first question should not be whether they have historical experience. The first question should be, do they understand the zoning? Design review, and again, I turn to, you know, Attorney Krieger. Design review is guided by zoning. And we have worked with you, Chairman Deeb, to follow the zoning and do the best damn design we could.
I, in my opinion, yes, you have. I, I, I think that there is in the minds of this board, an ambiguity in the zoning. As I pointed out at the end of, in my discussion about design consultants, there, there are ambiguities in the zoning in terms of scale versus height, in terms of what the zoning allows. So I think these are things that will have to be worked out. And in the schedule that we have going forward, we have allotted quite a bit of time to discussing these very issues where you would be at the table, we would be having an open discussion with you. So that is the point where this dialogue can really commence. So the, the key point in the way our hearing procedures go is that we want to hear from the town residents first because they, after all, are the most important entities in this whole bit is what they think. And we've heard from them. And now comes the point where the board and you work through those issues, keeping in mind what the zoning permits, what it requires, and how we make that work with what the residents expect. And I have every faith that your designers and your architects will be able to meet the challenge. I think you have shown flexibility. I do think that, I, I do not, I personally don't see obstacles in the way of this completing. I, I see a lot of hard work, but I, I don't think that we running the risk of design getting away from zoning, which is, I think, your main concern is that people are not cognizant of what the zoning permits and requires. Is that a really short summary of what your point is?
Well, if, if you recall, we, we heard in the previous board that they explicit, the one member in particular explicitly said it. But the, the, again, I look at the whole tapestry. And the tapestry of Winchester is, is, you know, I, I've been a fan of Winchester forever. The tapestry is town meeting. It's a legislative body. And they're advised, and these things take forever. You know this. How many times have you spent, you know, volunteered? And you spend hours and days and months doing stuff and then it gets disregarded. This didn't get disregarded. This was, and Brian, Brian can opine if, if Attorney Krieger can't, that, I think, Brian, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that, that we have complied with zoning and not just technical zoning. The, the flavor of the zoning, the intent of the zoning, the idea that we bring density gracefully to downtown. One of the slides I wanted to put up that I won't waste your time with, but I, I, I would ask you to look at the plans in the zoning where you have the east core, you know, we have these three cores that the town did. And then within that core, it narrows down to a tiny fraction of that core. It's like a fifth of it. And that fifth is called the PUD three. So this was not some accidental thing that happened. The, the, for years, the town focused on this. The planning board, the planning board presented this to town meeting. And it was, you know, that's not it, Brian. It's the PUD zoning map.
Oh, the map. I was saying, this is actually the PUD three. This is the, this is the, the design.
Yeah, but that's not the, that's not the piece in the zoning. It's the PUD three. This is not the zoning. This is guidelines.
Correct.
Right. So I was, forgive me, I was talking about the zoning. So there was a great concentration on these, first of all, the three cores and then within the three cores, the PUD three. And I'm, I'm sorry, the PUDs, one, two, and three, and we happen to be in PUD three. So this is. Yeah, exactly. What you don't see here in PUD three is the overlay of what was actually the east core. So the east core is quite a lot bigger. And so there was intense focus for years on planning this area. There you go. Right. Exactly. So we hope and expect that the planning board will understand that they are in a role of interpreting, not creating. Forgive me, and that's why I don't want to be the one to say this. I'd much rather have counsel say it in a much more eloquent way. But you are the agent of this. We are the agents of this. We didn't create this de novo. And we need to work together to understand what the town wanted. Ninety-two percent of the informed town wanted and expected. And it was to create, you know, housing. It was vitality downtown to help the businesses downtown to, and to do it in a way, we're very proud of our building. We think that David Hossin Building, that's why we chose David, is monumental enough to be able to be in this setting. It's exactly why we chose him. And it's a monumental building that we've proposed, appropriate to the site.
My, I, I, I think everyone here agrees that the planning board is not in charge of making zoning and that we are following, that zoning is what we follow. There are, there are certainly language within the zoning, which is open to, for instance, the design guidelines are open to interpretation. They are not, and, and, and I think that is where we see a lot of discussion. So I think, I, I, again, I, I don't, I, I, I understand your concern that the, the zoning board, I mean, sorry, the planning board cannot possibly go against its own zoning. I, I think perhaps, I mean, to me, that's an obvious statement. And I would presume that for the rest of the planning board, that's also an obvious statement that were we to go against our own zoning, it would be highly illegal and really a foot gun, as we used to say sometimes. So I, I, I think the biggest point, I mean, you're obviously very proud of your building. Other people have issues with parts of its design and those are the things that we have to work through. So I don't know if the rest of the board wants to come in on this. I, I, you know, the discussion is going to, we will be having dialogues in our next several meetings where we have set aside a prodigious quantity of time to work through these issues. It obviously behooves the board to make sure that they're up on the exact minishe of the zoning. But I, I don't see the, I, I personally don't see that as, as an obstacle to moving forward. I, I think, I mean, I, I, I don't know what else to say.
No, well, and, and I would echo, I'd love to hear, you know, any other comments. We can certainly, you know, we'd love to have an interaction. When we hear the public, we want to respond. We want to be able to interact. Normally, we would do this publicly, you know, in person, in publicly. These are odd times, but I agree with you. And of course, we already have spent, you know, our willingness to work with the board. We don't take a rigid line anywhere. But the description without any background of where we are now sometimes is, is, is difficult. I know we have a new board and I know they need to come up to speed. But, you know, we've been doing this for. But, you know, we've been doing this for, uh, since like two years. And we've been working in very good faith and want to continue to work in good faith. And I think it, it is helpful for new board members. To understand what, you know, what the board's. Role is.
I. I believe the board understands it. Um, I, I will let them speak for themselves. May, I don't know if they want to speak now. I think that. The only way we will know is as we move forward in this process. We will see, I mean, I. I mean, you're asking the board to do what the board should do. I think the board knows what it should do. And so the only way we'll find out whether the board knows that is by moving forward and seeing what happens. So. I mean, I, I understand your concerns. I think you've expressed them eloquently. Um, I think the board. Understands where they sit. So I think we can just move forward. I noticed that Art turned his camera on. Does that art mean art that you are interested in saying something or? Nope, he turned his camera off. So perhaps Art is not interested in saying anything.
Diab, I, I turned the camera on when the, when the discussion started to mention me, when Ian mentioned me. Just so I could be visibly part of the discussion if you wanted me to say anything. Uh, I don't hear any legal question to me, anything that, that, uh. Calls for a response from me. So unless you want me to address something, I'm content not to.
I, I don't think that it's required at the moment. Thank you, Art.
Do you have a super quick? So, I mean, I, I guess, uh, a couple of things. We were, we're running away with, with time here.
Yes, we are.
So I guess one is, you know, it sounds like. You know, at least, um, Mr. Gillespie is, is, is talking about the implement, you know, how, how we. Implement the special permit P U D, uh, criteria as well and, 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 uh. And site plan review guy, you know, the design guidelines and how we implement those. That is our, that is our job here. And see whether they fit in and to use a consultant to do the will of the board. So, um, on top of that, uh, we, um, I put this in my memo for this week that. Um, it seems like the, the best way to be efficient with our time with this, with this project is to, is to add, I hate to say. Planning board, but to add, to add meetings, uh, to our normal schedule to just deal with this. Rather than it this thirty minute and forty-five minute intervals. Once or twice a month, I think we need to add. So Diab and I sat down at the end of last week. And kind of calendar, calendared out, um, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to kind of cut it, so conversation off, but frankly, we, we. Have a lot more to do and there's only thirty minutes left of this meeting and there really is a lot more. Cheryl, you have a question?
Sorry. Yeah, I just thought, um. I'd make one comment, um. And it's, uh, it's really purely a comment. It's not, um, meant to start a conversation or deepen this conversation. Cause I'd like to hear what we need to accomplish tonight, Brian. I think that's more important. But I did want to, um. I did want to respond to what Mr. Gillespie was saying, um, and I think that. I don't feel respected by what you said, Mr. Gillespie. I feel as though your idea about scripting does not describe. That what has our process? I think what we have been doing is being part of a process that involves the public. And so we definitely are looking forward to working with you. And this is only the beginning, as you said. And, um, I think that if we talk more about. The history of this, um, I think it would be great to have you adding that to the conversation. And you haven't had an opportunity to be part of the conversation recently. So I look forward to the conversation. But I hope that you will understand that. We are in the last meetings in conversation with, um, with the town and the public that wanted to speak. And that was, that was a, um, that was an open conversation. And, um, it was not. About scripting. It was not about negativity. It was about people being able to voice their opinions. And I did not appreciate the way that you reflected on the board in the last half hour.
Well, forgive me, please. I deeply apologize. That wasn't my intent at all. Uh, when I talked about the script, forgive me. I've had too much time with Brian Zekely, uh, drilling the. Uh, regulations into me, drilling the zoning into me. The complexity of the CBD zoning is, is, is quite deep. As are the regulations. I think there are sixty-four pages. So forgive me, Ms. Wolf. The last thing I meant was a reflection on the board. When I meant, when I said script, I meant a script that was presented in the zoning. To, to town meeting in two thousand fifteen. That was, that, that was crafted by an outstanding attorney, one of the best in the state, frankly. Um, so that was the script that I was referring to, not to the board script. That we are working with a, a written, a couple of written documents. That we are trying to reflect on our team as developers. We're trying to reflect those, those documents. So forgive me, I didn't mean any, in, in any way to offend the board. That's what I meant by the script. I meant the zoning and the regulations.
Okay, I wasn't speaking for the board. I was speaking for myself, but I understand.
And, and please accept my apology. Uh, it was completely unintended.
Okay, um, I'm glad we got through that and I'm glad everyone was able to voice their opinion. We're out of time with scheduling. I think this is a direct question to everyone on the board. How does everybody feel? We can either do a nod or, or a nod. But basically potentially adding one meeting extra a month or potentially more. Um, it, we, it looks like we have scheduled, uh, a special meeting, uh, December seventh. And then maybe another one sometime in December as well. So two, two extra meetings in December. Is what we're looking to do to, um, so how does everybody feel about that? I really kind of feel that. We need chunks of time to do exactly what Ian and Diab and Cheryl. Uh, e- everyone is talking about is to actually get to the meeting and get to work. I don't think, like I said, these thirty, forty-five minutes here and there. So we do need everyone there. Um, so it is not, you know, we, it is important. So if we were to add an extra meeting, let me look at this very quick. December seventh. And December twenty-first. So those would be outside of the normal planning board meetings on the off weeks, December seventh and the twenty-first. Um, how can we do that? And we'll, we'll worry about logistics later. Yeah, Sally, that's great. If you want to raise your hand, if you can do that, okay. Everybody, Kurt is a maybe, it looks like.
We would have three, three meetings in the month of December is what you're saying, right?
Yep. So December, uh, yeah, December, December would be. December four, seventh, fourteenth and twenty-first, correct? And with the seven.
Possible to do it in November, one of those meetings?
So, uh, right now we have scheduled only, like, we have a regular meeting in November, November thirtieth would, um. And we, we're having a special, another, a special meeting November sixteenth. Oh, guys, I was, I'm sorry. So the first special, the first extra meeting is November sixteenth.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna be able to make the sixteenth, I don't think. Unfortunately, I'm traveling.
Okay.
And I didn't realize that was on the calendar until.
No, it's, that's why it's especially, but it's possible that we could, we, we could do a lot of that on the thirtieth. Then, then even more so than we should be doing this, the extra meeting on the seventh and, and the twenty-first. If possible.
And the other option is to look at the twenty, if I'm in the right year and the right month, it's the twenty-third.
A Wednesday or a, a different day of the week? No.
No, no, November twenty-third is a Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, that's the, um.
It's Thanksgiving.
That is, that is, yeah, it's Thanksgiving week. I think we had decided not to meet then. And plus, there wouldn't be much difference in time, like, um. Not a lot of work could be happening between now and then. So.
So Brian.
Your meeting next week.
So I have a question. If we, if we do set all of those meetings, and let's say Kurt can't make one of them, I can't make one of them. Are we, um, would I be?
You're allowed to miss one, you're allowed to miss one meeting and then, and only one.
Only one of the meetings associated with the hearing for.
It's a very tight, it's a very high bar.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
It is important, yeah. And then, cause then you can't actually vote at the end. So that's why, that's why scheduling is actually very important with this. So. It sounds like we can get the, get to the bottom of the rest of it through, through email potentially, um, which we're allowed to do.
So, uh, can I have another question? Sorry.
Yes, yep.
I forgot to unmute myself.
Yeah, you gotta stay off mute, Dia, because I'm gonna jump right in there.
Yeah, sorry, Brian, Brian, could you please put up that draft schedule? Just so we can get an idea of what the, what's, how, what we've, so we'll get the exact dates down. And I'm just seeing a black screen.
Oh, no, there's not again.
Yeah, not again. So if, if the board at least could look at what I sent out today. Um, the idea is that we would be getting to, um, and I've already.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, that, that it's still nothing. I'm sharing it again, but it's not, so the idea is that you can't meet on November sixteenth. So we're meeting again on November thirtieth.
Right. Brian, can you, what, the most important thing that I think the next step for the board is, is to come up with something for the design consultant to work with. And that's what we were planning on setting up in our next meeting. So, um, two things, Brian, if you want to let me screenshot, I might be able to, uh, just show this quickly.
Yep.
Can I just make a, um, a, a comment on, um, additional meetings and accelerating the process? Um, if we have a design consultant on board who's working with the design team and Ian. You, you know, increasing the number of meetings, I'm not sure that that is going to. Do more than just create more conversation among ourselves than actually have. Give the design team and the design consultant enough time to work with each other and, um. Respond to, um, you know. The comments.
Right. I, I think the only thing that I can say about that is that we're dealing with three different consultants.
Okay.
So we have three different, we're juggling three balls while we're doing all this. So I, I think that's. I think you're right, but I think we can stagger it. And, uh, and that's what this is showing is that sometimes once, you know, once we're talking about stormwater. Then we might be talking about, uh, traffic and parking and then design and we can, so it's not, yeah, so. I understand what you're saying is like, you, we're generating potentially more work, but not enough time for them to actually do the work. But I think the point is that we're splitting it, them up. Each, each meeting will focus on a specific thing.
Right. And I just, I, I mean, in my mind, the most important thing this board can do is to come to a consensus on what to tell the design consultant. We want them to work on. And so, um, we can, we, we, if we've decided to hire Mr. Chenba. Now he's gonna be cooling his heels, waiting for us to tell him what to do. So, um. If we can't meet next week, then I would suggest that we somehow. Chew horn the. What was going on in the special meeting on the sixteenth into the thirtieth. Unless this board wants to meet on the twenty-third. I guess that's the key question.
I'm available to meet on the twenty-third, um, and, uh. Perhaps that some conversation can happen in a way that is consonant with open meeting law. Um, by having documents submitted through Brian. I, I, this is where I would defer to our town council, but if we can't meet and if we, if we do meet, we have to have. All five of us there for every meeting is, and that's the point of clarification for me. I'm not clear about that. Um, but there's.
Yes, that is, that is true.
You need all five members for.
When the hearing is open, when the hearing is open, any member, you need, you, all five need to be there. You're allowed to miss one meeting. If you miss one, more than one meeting, then the world, you will not be able to vote, uh, at the end when there is a vote.
So to the extent that any work can be done between meetings by, um, having Brian. Colate inputs from the board and send them out in advance of the meeting. With the commitment that we will review them and prepare our comments extremely concisely. You know, those kinds of workarounds. Um, but I agree that there's a lot of work to be done and there's a lot of different consultants to, um, work with.
Okay, well.
Can I, uh, Diab, can I just jump in on that point?
Sure.
The, the, the open meeting law is tricky in that situation where I heard Sally said was that Brian would collate inputs from board members and circulate them. And if that's done outside a public meeting, I'm afraid that, that is not, uh, not accepted as proper. So talk, talk, talk to us, uh, could be my partner, Mina, or me. Uh, or Austin Anderson about, uh, open meeting law procedure for keeping the process moving the way you want to.
Okay. Thank you, Art. Appreciate that.
Very helpful. Thank you, Art.
So, so just to speed this, just to speed this up a little quick, we, we can't meet November sixteenth because Kurt can't. The week of Thanksgiving, November twenty-third, I guess is possible, but maybe, may, maybe not for people. Uh, we haven't really decided that. That's the only thing we need to decide. Otherwise, we're not meeting till the thirtieth.
Right. And we do have to, we do have to schedule the next meeting because we have to, um, postpone this till a time certain.
Correct.
So we, we have to make one decision tonight, which is when this hearing will continue to.
I, I can do the twenty-third, just.
I can do the twenty-third.
I can also do the twenty-third.
All right. All board members can. I cannot guarantee that, but all board members can, which is the most important.
Okay, so then why don't we, um, we will take up, um. On the twenty-third, what was noted here. Under November sixteenth, we'll just change that to the twenty-third and we'll come up with a firmer schedule or agenda for that meeting. So, um, I, I think officially I will now, uh, continue this hearing until a time certain. Which I will claim is at seven forty-five on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Did I, is the board, is that, is that what we agreed on?
Someone has to move that.
I would, I would move that this continuing, this hearing be continued to seven forty-five PM on November third. Excuse me, November twenty-third of twenty twenty-one.
And is there a second, second? Uh, and then I'm gonna stop sharing so I can see everyone. Um, and so, uh, roll call vote, please. Um, Kurt Spring?
Aye.
Uh, Eching Scott?
Aye.
Sally Dale?
Aye.
Cheryl Wolf?
Aye.
And Diab Jerry says aye. Excellent. So thank you, everyone. Thank you very much for your patience. Um, thanks to our two consultants who came before us. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gillespie and your whole team who are here. I always appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
And then, uh, we will see you all on the twenty-third. Um, now we will move belatedly to a discussion of ZBDA permit number three nine five one, forty-four Clark Street.
Yeah, so just, um, very quickly, I was, I was hoping maybe, cause I think there is actually a number of people here for. Abbey Road, but I don't think anybody is here for forty-four Clark. If we could maybe take a quick, you could just hit your, raise your hand function. Raise your hand function if you are here for forty-four. Not, not for, yeah, not for Abbey Road, cause I, I can already know there's a lot of people here for every road, but I don't. So I'm not seeing anyone here from forty-four, so I say, I think we should go right to Abby.
I thought I saw one for forty-four. It just looks.
No, it was someone who was, who put their hand down because they were actually.
Oh, no, forty-four, you said forty-four.
Okay, good. So no one's here for forty-four. So I say we take it out of order and we go to Abby first.
Okay, let's go to Abby first.
Um, okay, I'm gonna set this up and then I'm gonna turn it over to Art for a minute, but, uh, basically. Um, okay, I'm gonna set this up and then I'm gonna turn it over to Art for a minute, but uh, basically, the applicant, Craig Miller of Waterfield Design. Is um asking uh for uh essentially two different things. Um, the, his attorney has been working with Anderson and Krieger um to come up with the potential votes for this evening. Um, there's two things going on here uh in the vote uh or so, that was in your packet. One of the votes was going to be the release of funds for um items number, I'm gonna try to share this one more time, but it probably might not work, but if, um, Dia, if you could put the packet up. Um, showing um all of the item numbers, one through fifteen. Uh, but basically, the applicant Craig Miller is asking to be released um for doing uh what's considered the final paving. Um, at this, at this time, engineering has not had the the final sign-off uh on that. Uh, um, due to uh, the memo was circulated um to the, to the board um and engineering and and uh and the applicant have not had time enough to review that. So uh, one of the motions was going to be release funds this evening, to release money back to the applicant, uh, back to the applicant. You all, that is not happening this evening, uh, we also got an email this afternoon from Elaine Relin, the conservation agent in Winchester. Saying that um they, they would like to look at the merits uh of of this memo as well, and basically to hold off, so at at this time.
Oh, it's this one here, okay.
Yes, there it is, if you could turn it and.
Yeah, I will keep turning it.
Ooh, there we go.
Yeah, I I only have one way of turning it here, so hold on.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, this.
Does that work?
Yes, but this is not um the one, this is not the most recent one.
Okay, this was.
Does this say this, isn't it, it says handwritten numbers on the left, eleven, twelve.
Yeah, no, yeah, but it, there there should be grayed out versions of uh of what, of what's there, if, oh, yeah, if you go.
I I looked in the packet and I missed it because I.
Sure, so um, it's.
This is the one.
Yeah, when we get there, yeah, obviously, that, there it is, that should be it.
Okay. And for some reason, I can only rotate it in one direction. Really annoying. Okay.
Hmm, no, that is the same one, don't know what's going on here.
It's in the packet.
This is what's in the packet.
Uh, okay. This is fun, um, well, I have it here, let me get this.
You wanna email it to me, then?
Yep, no, well, I I I it's um, there it is, so it um. Dia, I actually sent you the whole folder and it's in the twenty twenty-one December ninth folder and it's called remaining items list version four, and it's, it's, it's right there.
Okay, there it is, I got it, I picked the wrong one, okay, there you go.
Uh, okay, sorry, folks, okay, so what the applicant is asking for is under final paving, you can see numbers eleven, twelve, and thirteen. They're asking for that to be released, you can see that it's being, again, we are not releasing that money. That money is not getting released this evening. What is going to happen is that um, the vote that that legal counsel has put forward. Is based upon um a vote that we could have taken at any time, it just so happens that we're here now and it was on the agenda, but it's for the post-construction work, so it's the work that's not considered the final paving, so Craig. Craig Miller is still on the hook for for making sure that that paving was done correctly. What we're doing is transferring the rest of the money, which is the, with all the, every, basically, everything else in gray that you see right now, in that gray column. That is what is getting uh transferred over to the HOA, this is in the HOA documents, this is nothing that was um. Was not contemplated, so it's all this money which which is considered post-construction work, so you can see here, making sure that the sewer manholes were, are in the right place. Making sure the stone bounds are not destroyed uh during during construction of the homes. Making sure these trees are not destroyed during the construction of the homes. And then the drainage system needing cleaning and the final as built, so these, we're holding money for all of these things. Um, that is post-construction work, that has always been going to be the uh responsibility of the homeowners association. Um, so basically, um, now, if we could put up those, the um, the votes. And I can explain a little bit more on on what we're doing, uh, and Art can fill in the rest.
This is the email you just sent me?
Correct. Um.
Okay.
Here it is, so. Like I said, with the idea is that there's gonna be money left over in escrow that's going to be in the form of an assignment, and I was gonna have Art kind of explain what that is.
Uh-huh, sorry, my apologies, my screen is acting weird, here we go.
Um, so, whoa. Okay, all right. Um, so this first vote is basically, again, to take the money that's post-construction work, all the things that I just mentioned, that Craig is not responsible for. Um, that goes to the HOA. And then the second vote is basically authorizing Dia to finalize that form of an assignment, and I was gonna have um. Art very just quickly kind of explain what the, what this um assignment and assumption of the, of the tri-party agreement is, and then if there's any questions um for Art or I. Um, that'd be, uh, that's fine, otherwise, we would recommend um uh the these two uh votes of the board.
So the uh assignment agreement that you would be authorizing uh is the vehicle for the. Homeowners Association to step into the shoes of the developer uh for the post-construction work. Um, Craig Miller is actually wearing both hats, but but that's fine, and uh, and it doesn't affect the analysis or or your vote. So he's the trustee, the sole trustee of the homeowners association, uh, and we have a trustee's certificate confirming that. Um, and homeowners association is in good standing. Um, and he is, of course, the principal of Five Points Development and has been since this project began. Uh, but the idea is that after the homes are sold and the post-construction work, after, absolutely after the homes are built, and the post-construction items come into play. Um, the homeowners association is the one that's on the scene at that point, not the developer anymore. Uh, the developer either sold the lots before the houses were built, as is, as happened with some of the lots so far. Or or perhaps built houses, but either way, the developers, developer is out of the picture, so the homeowners association is stepping in. Um. Brian, I do have one uh comment on that first motion, where it says the balance of thirty-six oh eighty-two. That was accurate when the preceding vote was going to be to release the money for items eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Since, as you explained, that money is not being released quite yet, it's not the balance, it's just releasing thirty-six oh eighty-two.
That is correct, I did not make that change, yes, so it's not that the balance, it's just um, that is correct, because it is not the balance, there still will be some left in there, so.
Yeah, in fact, I would say to release the the amount of thirty-six oh eighty-two for post-construction work, held in the name of.
Okay, we will get, I'll get that in the record of vote, um.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna write this, I'm gonna edit it right now, so to release thirty-six thousand eighty-two. Is that the sole edit that's required?
For for post.
For post-construction work.
For post-therapy construction work.
And that's it? Yeah, for post-construction.
Post-construction work. So. I, is is it my understanding that? This is still held in escrow, it's just the. Party which gets the money when that post-construction work is completed has changed to the HOA?
Yeah, the Rockland Trust already has thirty-six oh eighty-two uh from the HOA. Uh, and so that that the lender is the one that's actually holding the money, uh, and it would release the thirty-six oh eighty-two that it has from five points. To to five points, now that it's holding the substitute money.
And so the, so the HOA is giving Rockland thirty-six oh eighty-two.
Brian, that's, that's, Brian, that's right, isn't it? But that's, that's done?
Say again?
The HOA has given Rockland Trust thirty-six oh eighty-two, is I understand it.
Um, I mean, I, I have not uh confirmed that, but yeah, uh, that is what the attorney has confirmed.
Okay, well, until, until the final tri-party agreement is signed and executed, that's, that can be, we can find that out. Correct.
Yeah, yeah, Jill, Jillian, Jillian Barker, before she went on on maternity leave um a week ago, was in touch with the lender's counsel, uh, and so I'm.
I, yeah.
Sure, that's.
I'm sure that, yeah, I am sure, I I will get that confirmed, I'm nearly positive we would not be going through this at all if that wasn't already.
No, that's right, my my only question, actually, since the nu, the numbers have moved around a little bit, so I don't, I don't know that the lender is holding thirty-six oh eighty-two.
They're holding, they're certainly holding more than that, that's for sure, I'm, I, that I can confirm.
From the homeowners association.
Correct.
Okay, well, that's, that should be fine.
Okay, so the. So the only thing that's happening is that we we still have thirty-six oh eighty-two in escrow, because the work hasn't been done. The work will be done, and at which point it will be released to the homeowners association. And we, prior to um my, if the board agrees, prior to my executing the assignment, et cetera. We will verify that the homeowners association has given Rockland Trust thirty-six oh eighty-two.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a comment, I have a comment on the second motion, just uh to get it in now.
Okay.
Um, Brian, I'm not sure, since we're not releasing eleven, lines eleven, twelve, and thirteen, that the certificates of completion are getting done now, right?
They're not.
So that that can come out of the second motion.
And just, um, thank you for that, just to return, Dia, to your, to your point, one, we're, there's gonna be thirty-six oh eighty-two in the name of the HOA for the post-construction work. But we're still gonna be holding that, you know, twenty thousand dollars of the, for the paving work that we're not releasing right now, so just, just so we're, just so we're clear on that.
Right, so that we are, we are holding the twenty-some thousand in 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 Five Points name.
Exactly.
So, right. Okay, um, any other um alterations required?
Not by me.
Okay, then that's, that's, that's excellent, um, and I I think the key point is that um in terms of the pavement. We've received, for those in um who who are, the the board has received a number of statements about the um, the um. Status and quality of the pavement work, which um we are going to be, there will be a discussion with engineering. And uh, Five Points about that, so that's one of the reasons we're not releasing that this evening. So, if um someone would like to make the first motion? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone move.
I'll move it.
Okay, I wasn't sure, so if someone would please make the first motion?
I make the motion to approve the form of assignment and assumption of tripartite agreement. Attached, do do I read it all?
Yes, please.
Uh, attached here to to release thirty-six thousand eighty-two dollars for post-construction work, held in the name of Five Points Development LLC. And substitute therefore the equal sum of thirty-six thousand eighty-two dollars in the name of the trustee of the Abbey Road Homeowners Association.
And is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, uh, Cheryl?
Aye.
Sally? Sally, you are muted.
That was an aye, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt?
Aye.
Eching?
Aye.
And Dia says aye, five zero, thank you, if someone would make uh the second motion, please.
All right, I will, motion to, I move to authorize the chair of the planning board. To execute such assignment and assumption of pri, of tripartite agreement and to take any other actions. That are reasonably necessary in conju, in conjunction therewithers.
Okay, okay, is there a second, please?
Second.
Uh, thank you, uh, roll call vote, um, Eching?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And Sally?
Aye.
And Dia says aye as well, okay, so thank you very much. And Brian, I'm going to send this off to you, so you have the um exact wording.
Yeah, and I can send um that record of vote out.
Okay.
Though, I guess um forty-four Clark Street be the next, um, and I don't know what we. In terms of the other two agenda items that we were gonna do for ten minutes each about Holton Street and Master Plan Implementation Committee. I I can give a two-minute update on the Holton Street consultants, uh, but I guess first we should do forty-four Clark real quick.
I think, yes, we should definitely do forty-four Clark, uh, let me see if I can bring it up.
Mister Chairman, I was here for uh ten Converse and Abbey Road, I don't know that I'm needed for the remaining items unless you want me to stay.
No, please, thank you very much for being here, Art, and uh. Have a great evening, I I I I don't think we need you anymore.
Okay, thanks to everyone, to the board members and Brian, and uh, obviously, if if you do need me, Brian can call me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, good night.
Night.
Um, thanks, I'll um, I'll start um talking about forty-four Clark Street. Um, so the petitioner is seeking a special permit. Under three five five, three five seven, and nine point four. Um, so to be permitted to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located on a lot that doesn't meet the lot area frontage and lot with requirements. To construct a new single-family dwelling. That will be located closer to the front and side property lines than permitted as of right. Properties located in the RG is just uh under sixty-two hundred square feet. This was, uh, this property was actually the result of a demolition hearing by the Winchester Historical Commission, so this um, the applicant went through, um, went through that process. Uh, the Winchester Historical Com- Commission deemed the property historically significant. Um, yeah, but uh subsequently lifted the delay based on the design that is before us uh this evening. Um, the Macris, the Massachusetts Cultural Resource inventory. Um, page for that area of Clark Street, so this is, it's, it was attached, so forty-four Clark Street is called out as a historic resource as well. Um, but again, the historical commission did lift the delay based upon the design um showing, uh, when it's lifted, uh, basically saying that um. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, there, there was also, uh, the historical commission. Uh, looked at this special permit as well, um, after the demolition review, and it was um mixed, because there were two members of the board. Of of the commission um that felt that it should not have been, uh, that the delay should not have been lifted, so it was essentially like a five-two vote if the whole board was there. Um. Um, so it was a little bit mixed, but not completely, it was a majority of five-two. Um, as far as back to this petition, no setbacks are becoming worse as a result of this tear-down rebuild. It's current, it's currently pre-existing, so um, it's, um, I don't believe that the proposed structure really would negatively impact the neighbors or the neighborhood, and I I agreed with the historical commission. Uh, the majority of the historical commission with their analysis of the new structure and how that it would fit. Um, uh, into the existing streetscape and recommended favorable action with regards to this petition. Uh, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um. We could, um, I just wanted to point out very quickly that I don't believe we got a landscape plan with this. Um. And also, um, these are very steep lots in the back. And so I was unable to determine whether there was any cut and fill involved with this prop, with this development. Brian, did you have any?
Uh, I did, I uh did not notice that it's. Uh, I did, I, uh, did not notice a substantial amount of cut and fill. Um, the house is certainly extending back, um, a decent amount, or, or you know, the new house is gonna extend back further. Um, so there's no doubt there will be some grading involved, I don't, um, I know the assistant engineer is on the, uh, is on the call as well, if there were any questions for Brian Minter.
Yeah, why don't we pull in Brian? Thank you for reminding me of that, since I can't see him right now. Uh, Brian Minter.
Can you expand your screen? I'm sorry, can you, can you blow up your image? Thank you.
I will make it larger, I will not blow it up, because then I would lose my laptop, but, sorry, bad, bad joke, okay.
I was just gonna, gonna mention really quick, and we should obviously let, let Brian speak, but I think this image, I have this up on my own monitor, Deob, I think there, there is topo lines on here.
Um, who is actually speaking, please, because I can't see who you are.
Th- this is Kurt, sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I, I was just gonna highlight, it looks like there is, there are like the topo lines here on the survey, um, and it doesn't look like the grade change, at least it doesn't appear as though it starts until, you know, the, beyond the back of the proposed addition, like a, a real material change, but I should let Brian speak.
Okay, okay, thanks, I, sorry Kurt, I didn't recognize your voice, so.
No worries, hey.
Um, Brian Minter, um, can you chime in on this, please?
Yes, Kurt, I agree with your assessment, um, that there's no, I don't, I never, did not see any material change in grading. Um, there may be some in the back for the patio and everything, um, but, Mister Chair, to answer your question, I, I'm not aware of any cutting and filling, uh, on this project.
Okay, thank you, I, there, there was another, uh, uh, another project on Clark Street that went to the ZBA a while back, which had significant fill, and this slope in the back is pretty steep, so I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay, um, were there any other comments from engineering on, uh, this property?
Uh, yes, um, so, overall, the, um, the approach, uh, I'm sorry, let me take a step back. So they are creating eight-hundred-and-eighty-five square feet of impervious surface to offset this increase of, uh, the, the runoff generated from this impervious surface, the applicant is proposing to install infiltration system. Um, their, their design and model of the infiltration system looks reasonable, um, and I think all their design assumptions are in line with accordance of, uh, standards of engineering practice. The one comment that I wanted to bring to your, the planning board's attention is the site is within two-hundred feet of the, um, Horn Brook, and I believe that's it within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. So, I recommend that the applicant bring their project before the Conservation Commission, or at least, I'm sorry, to discuss it with the Conservation Commission to determine if there's any required filings.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, um, open it up to the board, are there, uh, if we get through this quickly, are there any concerns of the board about this project?
Any questions of clarification, s- s- um, if I may, Deob?
I'm sorry, I, I lost my hear- my hearing piece there, could you?
I have clarifying questions, if I may.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
So, am I right that the house was, um, taken off of demolition delay? But because what I'm seeing here is an addition, they're not demolishing the house?
No, it's a full demo.
They are rebuilding, they are reusing the existing foundation, or at least the existing footprint of the foundation. I'm sure they're gonna.
Correct, yeah, they're, they're reusing that, that footprint, um, and, but, it is a, it is a, it is a full demo.
Okay, and in terms of the historic nature of the neighborhood, the Historic, um, Local Commission, um, that was that five-to-two vote you were talking about, right?
Well, again, it's not an official five-to-vote, but basically, it was lift, the, the, the demo delay was lifted uh, when there, when there was not a full commission there, so then, um, and then there wasn't a full commission when this petition was up for the ZBA, but what I could tell, basically, between those two meetings, an unofficial vote, my guess here, based upon those two votes, was that five people were in favor of lifting the delay and and, 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 you know, recommending favorable action on this petition, two different votes, and two people were not in favor of lifting the delay and not in favor of this.
Right.
Yeah, so that, so, again, not an official vote, but my take on the situation, it was a five-two.
Right, and then the other clarifying question that I have is, is understanding how to read grading plans so that I can understand the site plan review trigger, which requires that there be site plan review if more than five-hundred square feet of a site is changed by more than six percent in slope, and I, I don't know how to calculate that, but I do see that the, the, is the, is the proposed patio going to be changing the grade in the area where the patio is being installed? Like, it's not a sloped patio, right?
It'll mo- might most likely be flat, and looks like there's two and a half feet going, going down, I, you know, I, I couldn't tell you if, you know, you need an engineering calculate, you need an actual calculation of
Area.
For, for the grading to actually do that, uh, using a program.
Right, and so, I guess my question to Brian Minter is, um, how does that calculation work out?
Sally, that's a great question, I mean, I did not calculate the, the slope of the patio, um.
Well, it's probably one percent or flat, right?
Yes, uh, I believe, if I remember correctly, I believe they have a drainage, um, port within the patio, so runoff from the patio will be directed to a drainage hole, which will lead to the infiltration system. Um, so there will be some pitch.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I, I did not do any calculations to confirm the six percent change over five-hundred square feet. Um.
Even so, I mean, this patio is sixteen by sixteen, like, there.
Okay.
You can just rough, you can just rough say that that's not happening.
Okay, that's helpful.
And, and if they were simply to put, if they were not to change the grade, but simply build up the bottom part of the patio so that it was flat, that would not be a grade change. So, for instance, it's a, as, as someone pointed out, it's a two-foot difference, so you could have, you know, a two-foot taller foundation at the bottom, which keeps the patio.
Okay, I see it now, the ninety-nine and the ninety-eight and the sixteen by sixteen, those are the, the relevant numbers, okay.
Yep.
Okay, I can get better at this.
We all, we all learn all the time.
Eeching, you got your hand up?
Yep, uh, so, my comments about this project would be that it is a fairly modest, um, uh, development, I think it's under two-thousand square feet or so. Um, the elevation looks, you know, a little bit taller, um, than the original, I mean, but I think that probably within, uh, normal calculations of like, uh, contemporary housing. Um, and, uh, one thing about the facade was that I, it, it seems like these developers keep not putting shutters on, and it feels like I'm looking at a face without eyebrows, um, I don't know what that thing is, but, um, so, I think that my concern really is, is what the demolition delay was trying to do, which is, uh, trying to, I, from my understanding, to preserve some naturally occurring affordable housing and to protect some historic resources, right? But, um, you know, I, I think that, I, I'm guessing, but, you know, this, this will not be, uh, within, when after the development, I don't think it's gonna be, um, within reach of a lot of people. Um, I think it's gonna be a pretty expensive, um, thing, and it, maybe that's, that's, you know, fine. Um, but I'm just saying, if we're allowing, you know, to, people to skirt this, I think, um, the, the historical resources part, you know, if, if historical, uh, committee is fine with that, and I guess, you know, that's fine, but, um, if it's to protect naturally occurring affordable housing, I, I think that there's some failure to that, um, to, to lay demolition, I, I just don't know where you cut off the line with, um, how to, how to deal with that. Um, and then, I remember, I think that the suggestion, Brian's suggestion to, um, talk to Conservation Committee, uh, Commission is, is really relevant because of its steep drop-off into the creek, and, um, I don't know, I don't remember where I read it, but something about, um, maybe no pesticides on the lot, which I, I would, I mean, I think that would be awesome, but how, how do you, how do you execute that, or how do you, um, you know, how do you put that in a deed, or, you know, in zoning, or, or, I don't know how.
Just, you know, it would be an order of conditions through their conservation commission, if, if, if it's actually within their jurisdiction, so.
Okay, so I would, I would vote for favorable action with, um, w- with the condition that they do go to the conservation.
Eeching, um, this is Brian again, uh, Assistant Town Engineer, with respect to that comment, it was, um, it's a, I think, a no phosphor- uh, zero phosphorus fertilizer. Uh, I don't know how you can really enforce that, but I just wanna educate developers and homeowners about the importance of using, um, less invasive or, uh, less detrimental fertilizers in, in town, because that would um, improve surface water quality, so it's, it's also just trying to get the word out there to people that use these products.
So, I, um, I just, I don't believe Horn Pond Brook is behind it. Um, I just, I, it's, I can't, I used to be able to draw on my screen here. Here we go, I don't know if you can see this, but here is, can you see that circle I'm drawing?
Mm-hmm.
That is where forty-four Clark Street is, this thing below it here, that is the, um, that's a DPW yard, I believe.
Yeah.
And where the, um, and so Horn Pond Brook, I believe, is down on the other side of the DPW yard, so I don't believe it is, Brian, i- is, is my recollection correct?
That's my understanding, Deob.
Yeah, that's right, it's, it's on the other side, but it, it's a question of whether or not it's in, it's possible that there might be, that, that the rear of the property might be within, within their jurisdiction.
Right, I just, I don't know if, uh, the, the, I don't believe there's runoff from this property going into the Brook, that's all I'm, I'm, I'm trying to say. Is, I think that it's.
Yeah.
Um, so the, um.
Nonetheless, though, Deob, if, if the con- if the engineering department requested that the applicant, um, obtain, you know, feedback from the Conservation Commission, we should support them.
It's more, it's more, I see what, it's, it's more of just see, they need to see whether or not they, that ConCom has jurisdiction over this property, it's not like, you can't get their opinion if they don't have any.
That's right.
No jurisdiction.
So, I, 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 I agree, Sally, I just wanted to clarify the relationship of the house to the Brook, that's all.
And, I wanted to follow up on Eeching's comment, but I wanted to hear from Kurt and Cheryl, too.
Okay, Kurt?
Uh, uh, yeah, I can, I, I would echo, I guess, uh, I would echo, I think, Eeching's motion, which was to recommend favorable action, subject to the, um, recommendation of, I guess, the engineering department to confirm the Conservation Committee, whether or not this is, you know, in their purview, given proximity to Horn Brook.
Okay.
The summary, I think.
Can I ask one question of everybody? If you go back to the, um, the site plan? I was trying to figure out, and Brian, maybe you can answer this, Brian Minter, is there, is there pavement on both sides of the house? I couldn't quite tell, it's not called out as BT.
Yeah, I believe, Ch- Cheryl, I believe there's pavement on the left side of the house. Um, if I remember correctly, their driveway, that's an existing driveway, and based on what they're proposing, I don't, I did not, and did not see that they were gonna change anything with their driveway. It looks like, if you look at the, yeah, on the left side, that's their existing, yep, that's it right there, and on the right, on, on the right side, they're proposing, left side, I pretty sure it didn't change in size.
Sorry, Deob, I was just gonna say, I think there was a reference in some of the text from the applicant that indicated the driveway was gonna basically be the same, but they were gonna try and get space for two cars in tandem, which I think implied, I think there was some reference to that.
Yeah, I mean, again, we, we don't have a landscape plan, which would presumably show us, so I think we're missing the landscape plan.
It does, it does preserve the, it looks as though it's preserving the trees, which is good.
Yeah.
They're here on the plan, which is nice.
Yeah, uh, but, yeah. Um, but they are still required to tell us. Um, the one other comment I would make, and, um, I know Eeching, you have, you have, I just wanted to add this to your motion, if I may, and that is to, um, let me write that down, is that, um, if you look at their front elevation, it's not symmetric, which really bugs me, that that's because, so they have the, um, it looks like the entrance is to the left, or certainly the two first floor windows are not equidistant from the front entrance, and the small window that's centered over the door is off-center from the building. So, there's something weird about, unless, at least that's what my eye sees.
Could just be a bad drawing.
Well, what is it showing in the plans? The plans would tell you, let me just see.
Um.
The plans are fairly symmetrical, it's just a, uh.
No, I thi- I, I think the plans showed what you're describing, Deob. Because, because I think the, the space to the right of the door is a study, it's a larger space, whereas the left of the door is a smaller space, bathroom, mudroom, and you can see the spacing between the front door and those windows on either side is, is different.
Yeah, oh, this is, this is, I'm sorry, here we go, this is the, this is the front entrance, there we go.
Right.
So, making it bigger.
Maybe the bathroom window is moved over for the shower or something, but maybe just move the study window.
Well, um, I can't really tell from here, um, it's twenty-four feet across, the windows are two foot six. It's hard to tell, I think this is the first floor.
Yeah, it is, it says entry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong side of the building, huh, silly me. Um, I still can't tell, so, yeah, maybe, I, my only recommendation would be to, to shift it over, because I think it looks wonky from the street. Um, whoops, let me try that again.
Here's a que- question that I have about, um, the, the intention of the design of the building is to fairly closely, if not as closely as possible, replicate the design of the house that's being removed with some improvement for the front entry. Is the house that's being removed symmetrical, as you say? Deob?
Uh, it's.
Well, wait, hold on, the, the historical commission generally doesn't try to replicate buildings, just in general, just like what they try to replicate is the scale and the setback. So the idea, so that's what it is, is they roughly the same size building in roughly the same location, which is what this is, only a little bit.
Only a little bit bigger, you said?
A little bit bigger, but I think, as Eeching said, it's just more, a little bit more modern, but the idea is that the setback is, is the same as all the other, you know, it's a very cohesive street, and I think that, you know, all the lots look exactly the same, so the idea is that everyone, and if you look down the street, there are a number of new houses that are very similar to this on these smaller frontages that are a little bit bigger than the other houses, and they're all in that ballpark, and that's why it was a, you know, a majority vote.
Right.
You guys, I have to, I have to get off, I've got a deadline tomorrow morning, so.
Okay.
I can't keep going.
So, why don't we, we have a, we have a motion for favorable action from Eeching, um, and the only notes are, um, follow the recommendation of the Engineering Department with regards to bringing in the ConCom. Um, and, uh.
And align, you can just say aligning the, aligning the, um, windows on the front facade, um.
Aligning, or centering, yeah, aligning windows on the front facade and centering the entryway. And that's, that's it.
And, and the hearing at the ZBA is on the eighteenth, is that correct?
I do not know.
Uh, I, I believe, I'll let you know in a second. Uh, I, I believe, I'll let you know in a second, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, it is. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Third.
Show me faster, Kurt. Uh, roll call vote. Kurt?
Aye.
Eeching?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Diab is aye as well. Um, thank you very much, five zero. I think we will talk about Holton Street Consultants at a later date. Sorry, Brian, this took longer.
I think, I think I'll write a, a more, uh, detailed memo about that, um, rather than this week. There, I, but please read the, the quick note that I did, uh, write about Holton Street, but I, I will write more about it and start working.
Okay, um, thank you, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, so roll call vote. Cheryl?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Eeching?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And Diab says aye as well. We are adjourned. Uh, thank you.